Agenda for the school committee meeting, which is held here regularly at the Foxborough High School Media Center. At 7:00 PM, we will have visitors. 7:05 approval of minutes. 7:10 teaching and learning highlights. Taylor's school Positively STEM. 7:30 additional FHS overnight travel. 7:40 preliminary discussion of proposed FY20 budget. 8:20 approval of MSVA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, project funding agreement. 8:30 acceptance of donations. And 8:40 other matters. Do we have any visitors who would like to come forward at this time?
Yes, sure.
All right, let's move on to approval of minutes, please. Are there any additions or corrections?
I have none. I make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of November 19th, 2018.
All in favor? Four zero zero. Thank you. Aha, our favorite part. Teaching and learning highlights. And my favorite part. Yes, I pass the plate to Dr. Rogers.
Okay. So this evening, as you can see, we have a full house. So on the agenda, it talks about Positively STEM. And it actually should say Positively STEM and innovation as well, because we actually have two highlights as part of this. Our first group is our technology tech leaders with Dr. Rogers and Ms. Powers. And then we also have the innovation, which is new, which are some ukulele players. So I'm going to ask all of you to come up, just scoot your chairs right up to the guest table. And we'll have Dr. Rogers help assist you in getting settled up there. So they have some exciting things to talk about, of things that are new at the Taylor Elementary School this year.
And I just wanted to just say thank you to Jen Powers, who is our math specialist at Taylor, and to Allison Noonan, who is our music teacher. And thank you to all the wonderful students that came tonight with their parents during this very busy time of year. But I'm really thrilled to be able to share a couple of things that are happening at Taylor. And we would just love to come back another time and share some more fun.
We'd love to have you.
Terrific. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
As Dr. Rogers said, I am math specialist at Taylor School, but I'm also the instructional technology leader. So I help day-to-day with the teachers, the students, any kind of software, hardware, minor, major issues that happen during the day, things that happen that go on. We had some exciting things happen over the summer at Taylor School. That's why we wanted to come and share that with you. We have a brand-new computer lab. And when Dr. Rogers and I were talking about how to set it up and plan for it and make the new space and arrange it and all that, we thought it would be a really nice opportunity to ask some fourth graders to help us in assisting being leaders in the school and work with us and start a tech crew. It's all brand-new. They're only going to get one year at this new lab. We thought we'd try another way to make it really special for them. I'm going to actually ask the crew to tell you a little bit about how they got their job, what they do on a day-to-day basis. And we are patiently awaiting one other person, but someone is going to maybe jump in and stand in for her. So we're being flexible right now. Our crew is here. I'm going to start by introducing Leighton Sherlock. She's going to tell us a little about the new computer lab.
We are so excited to have a brand-new computer lab this year. It used to be a much smaller space next to the library. Now it is in its own classroom. We have 24 new desktop computers on great computer tables. Every student at Taylor uses a lab during the week and even extends to day two. Students practice keyboarding skills, research, interactive writing. And third and fourth graders have begun taking math assessments online. It's such an important space in our school. And we want to be sure it stays as nice as it is today for years and years. Let me introduce Mimi Cohen. She'll tell you how we got the job.
Mrs. Powers came to both fourth-grade classrooms in the fall to tell us about this new opportunity. She was looking for students who were available for the first five to 10 minutes of the day to help in the computer lab. She was looking for students who had the following qualifications: great organization skills, very responsible, familiar with computer lab and equipment, able to get morning work done right away, then get to the lab for a few minutes and be able to work as a team to keep the lab, the new lab, awesome. We all filled out an application for the job. A total of 19 students applied, and our teachers recommended us for the position. Let me introduce Taylor Carbonin. She'll tell you about what we've been doing.
In the morning, we make sure the computer lab is in order, neat, and clean. We check that the laptop carts are organized and charging. We check that the iPads are returned and charging. We check the headphones, mouse, and keyboard. We clean tabletops, and we make sure the chairs are pushed in. We even make sure the window shades are even and straight. Let me introduce Morgan Brightfield. She'll talk about a few plans for our new lab.
We are now starting to decorate the lab. We are making bulletin boards with expectations and grade-level technology standards. We are getting stationary chairs, since the ones with wheels can be tricky and noisy. We are getting a new rug for group lessons in front of the interactive whiteboard, as well as a new printer. We will also be acting as tech crew coaches. We will visit classrooms to remind students about the expectations in the computer lab. We will also come to the lab with kindergarten and first-grade students to help, coach, and support them as they learn to use the desktops. We love our new computer lab, and we want to make sure it's ready for every day for all Taylor students.
That's our tech crew. And they're the best little stars. They're slithering away. You did a very nice job.
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, wait. We have a question for the tech crew.
You don't get off that easy.
Of course.
Do you want to come up and take it from there, Leah?
Yeah.
And then you'll get all the parents in the background going. Stand right over there, that's all right.
Dr. Nellie has a question for you guys.
So tech crew, I'd like to know what you did to prepare for your interviews and if you were nervous about it.
I was a little nervous.
Was it as bad as you thought?
No.
Think it was a good experience?
Good. They all did a beautiful job filling out the application. It was a written process. And then it also had to be given to their teachers, and the teachers went through and looked through each one. And then we all talked to the group and decided on these would be the first four.
Wow.
They did the nicest job filling out their application. And they all told me why they were qualified. And they did a beautiful job for it. And they are, because they're doing a great job so far. And I don't doubt that they will keep it up.
I liked how you all introduced each other. You segued, which means goes into the next person. You finished up your report, and you went into the next person. That was kind of a neat way to introduce each other. That's pretty clever.
Do you like taking care of the room for everyone? So the crew is just a small group of people responsible for the whole school. Do you like that?
Yeah.
That's a lot of responsibility.
It also should be noticed that they're doing a really nice job with Clorox wipes on the mouse right now, because we share a lot of germs.
Parents are very happy to be able to take care of that for everybody, too.
Great.
And the blinds are the same.
We don't want to share that.
And the blinds are the same, right?
You'll notice driving by the front.
I like the attention to detail. That sounds wonderful. And I like that they're helping with the younger students. You like being leaders in the school? That's fantastic.
What's the best part of your job as a tech leader? Each person tell me one thing that's the best part. Who wants to go first?
What's the best part?
That we get to help the whole school by keeping the computer lab clean and free from germs.
I think that knowing that, like, all the kids are going to come in, and it's going to be, like, neat, and it's not going to be, like, all messy, and they're going to want to go in there.
Being able to, like, help the students that are in our school.
Can she repeat that just a little bit louder so it can be picked up?
Being able to help the students that are in our school and keeping our lab clean.
Nice. Thank you.
Letting it be organized and clean for all the students.
Good job.
There was a lot of work putting that computer lab together this summer. So I'm so excited that you're enjoying it as much as you are. You're taking great care of it, it sounds like, too.
That's the plan.
Well, thank you all for your hard work. Thank you, Mrs. Powers.
What would be the best spot for us? If you just stand in a little U here? Or you want us around here?
Right, right there, here would be good.
Okay, great. I wish I'd brought more ukuleles.
No, that was weird.
Oh, my gosh.
Just make a little, my little U right here. I won't say much, just because I'd rather have them play for you. But I'm Ally Noonan, and this is my fifth year here in Foxborough and my fourth year at Taylor. I'm also at IGO with kindergarten music. And this is our first year at Taylor having ukuleles. We started this program at the Taylor this year. Annette Kerner has begun the program at Borough and IGO last year. And the success there, we started at the Taylor. It's a new instrument for all of us, myself included. So it's been fun to learn with them. We only just started in November. So we know one chord and three very short songs. I only see them once every six days. So you can imagine it, you know, it's slow-going.
Do they record it, too?
We do the recorder in third grade. Oh, third grade, okay. And then we'll continue, actually, after the vacation, we're going to do pickup recorder again. And we'll do kind of part recorder, part ukulele. So third grade mostly recorder, fourth grade mostly ukulele, with other stuff thrown in as well. So, yeah. So we're going to find our C chord, fourth finger on the third space, right? And we're going to, I'll start you off. Okay, we're going to do Row, Row, Row Your Boat. Here we go. One, two, here we go.
Row, row, row your boat, gently down the stream. Early, 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 life is hard as day.
Nice job, nice job. And then we're going to do London Bridge. Two, here we go.
London Bridge is falling down, falling down, falling down. London Bridge is falling down by the lady.
Good, excellent. I want to make sure, Christine, can you be seen here? Can we make room for Christine? I don't want to be seen. And Katie, yeah, make sure everybody can be seen. There we go. Much better.
Please do make sure everybody's being seen. Our monitor in the room is not working, but I have been guaranteed it is being broadcast to the community.
Oh, so make sure you're smiling when you're saying that.
You're on TV, everybody.
All right, and how about Three Blind Mice? This is our tricky one, right? One, two, here we go.
Three blind mice, three blind mice. See how they run, see how they run. They all went after the farmers' wife, who cut off their tail to the car. Been acting to every scene, such as finding your life as three blind mice.
So we hope to add a new chord just after vacation. We're doing some other fun kind of holiday festive things this week. But after vacation, we'll learn the F chord. And we can learn a whole bunch of new songs that involve two chords. Not many songs for just one chord. So we've done the best we can with just one.
Great job.
And we'll move on to two chords and three and whatever they can handle, so.
It's three more songs than I can play on the piano.
There we go, there we go. Yeah, I think they're enjoying it, and we're going to have a great year.
That's great.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you for sharing with us.
Maybe we'll come back and we have more.
Thanks for sharing.
Do you guys like playing the ukulele?
Yes.
Do you practice?
Um, I don't.
Well, we have one set for the school. So unless some of them have ukuleles, a few of you have them at home or nobody in this group. You have one? Yeah. I mean, maybe they could make a Christmas list in the future. I don't know, with the ukulele on it. But for now, we have one, one set for the school.
That's great.
They're really nice.
Does the ukulele club at the middle school?
They do, right? Yes, they do. Is that Mr. Glenn who runs that? Yes.
That's great.
You guys have, the fourth graders have something to look forward to? Well, that's what I figure, yeah. And then they can move on there and have a place to be at home, yeah.
Do you take good care of the instruments?
Yes.
They're very fragile, right?
Yes.
Because they can break in the strings to get tuned up all the time, so.
Yeah, we talk about that. When we say our rest position, well, usually we're sitting, and we say, hands on the neck, strings on the knees, rest position. Thank you and please. Because we have to be very careful with it like this. And otherwise, you can imagine, I mean, I chose these children for a reason. But they're good at keeping their instruments quiet. But it's really hard to teach while everybody just wants to, you know, keep playing. So we have to really quickly on learn how to do rest positions, so.
Especially with stringed instruments.
Yes.
They're much more fragile than other instruments, so. Great technique.
Absolutely, yeah, they're doing a nice job. We had some help from Mr. Doldi over there, who came in and helped us with our first lesson just to, you know, kind of urge us to do things the right way and show us some proper techniques, so that was nice.
They're awesome. You guys are doing awesome?
Yeah, they're doing great.
You wouldn't know that you just started a month ago.
Right, yeah.
Only a month ago?
Just a month ago. We started in November. We've probably played ukulele four times, I think.
Wow.
Impressive.
And good singing, too. And singing, too, singing on key on which, right? So you practiced that as well. So well done.
And they're also very expensive. That's why you have to keep them in rest position.
They are. We've told them, and Mr. Doldi mentioned, too. I mean, these are really good quality ones. These are not cheap ones that you're going to find, you know, in the dollar store. I may have said that. Yeah, these are pretty expensive ukuleles, so.
Well, it's a good point, since we're talking about the budget tonight. That was a very good point. Take it to those correctly.
Yeah, we have to use it correctly.
We're not allowed to tune it either, just in case.
In line with the rules, that's good.
Thanks for getting good, thanks for getting good quality, because that's a huge difference to buy good quality instruments and have the students listening to good quality is huge, so.
We do that for the recorders, too. The recorders are the best ones. I know I've said that to them, too. If it breaks, you need to buy the new one from me. Please don't go to the dollar store and buy a new recorder. They all need to sound the same, and we want them to be good quality instruments, even just recorder, so. Do you guys play any other instruments on your own?
Guitar, a bit.
I play guitar a bit.
Ooh, so that's like the same, pretty much. We have a couple piano players. I know Sia plays piano, right? And Chloe plays piano, and lots of singers.
I sing and I play guitar.
Anything else? We didn't want to take up too much of your time.
Well, thanks for taking care of the instruments.
They do, they do a great job.
You guys want to buy the boots?
Yeah, we like those boots.
But I'm not thinking of these ones. Bill will never get off either one.
Well, that's a very hard act to follow. I'm going to just say, both groups of students.
Dr. Rogers had many new innovations that were taking place at the Taylor. And to come up with those, too, she said, I can bring another. We said, we'll save for the next, the next meeting.
I like when they do the musical ones. That's fun. We did that last year.
What grade is the ukulele club? Is that just seventh and eighth? Or the middle school?
At the middle school? I think it's all.
I believe it's all. I couldn't remember.
So I think once they move up from fourth, I think they're eligible to join.
That's perfect, then.
That was nice that Mrs. Doldi was there.
Yes.
And now, another one of my very favorites. Additional FHS overnight travel, but it happens to include international travel. So welcome.
I'll start with the shorter one first, because I think this will probably be a little bit more detailed. But our cheerleaders have, oh my goodness, the word just went right out of my head, qualified. I'm sorry. For the competition, the international competition that's going to be happening in March. I think we're going to probably, just the caliber of what we've been seeing over the past couple of years, is I think this is probably going to wind up going on a regular one every year, kind of like the track, where they may or they may not qualify. This year, again, they did not last year, but I believe the year before they did. And so that competition is in Florida at Disney. The actual dates of the competition are the 16th and the 17th, but there'll be travel time on either end of it. So just to let you know. So that's what we do have and that we are bringing to you here. And then the ladies are here to present.
Well, should we vote on that one? Because these need to be voted separately, I believe.
Do we need to vote on the specific dates for the travel? I mean, if it's, or is it just approving the trip?
I think it's just approving.
It's approving the trip, because, yeah.
Just trying to make sure.
Right. Are there any questions, discussion?
No, just congratulations to the two for making it that far.
I'm sure that we pass it on that way. I believe a significant number of parents will also be traveling with the students with this particular trip because of the nature of the competition and all that will be happening, so.
Is it for two years? The intro says 18, 19, and 19, 20 school years?
For, where are we?
Up on where it's asking for.
Or is it really 18, 19 for this one and 19, 20 for the other? Thank you. I got it now. I kind of put it together.
I'm sorry, you threw me for a moment.
Threw me, too, at first, but I get it now. And now that I asked the question.
I would assume the cheer boosters are going to be fundraising.
Yes, they are going to try to offset a bit.
Great. I'll make a motion that we approve the AmeriCheer Internationals trip for our cheerleading team at FHS for March of 2019.
All in favor? Four zero. Excellent.
Yeah, so.
Cornesores españoles.
Yes. I'm Christine Smith, Department, have a World Language Department. And this is my colleague, Irene Tittmas. And Irene and I have been traveling together for a very long time, over 15 years, I think.
Close to 19 years.
19 years. So that we have been.
I want credit for all my, all my years.
You deserve this.
A lot of chaperoning.
Yes. A lot of chaperoning. So we've been fortunate enough to offer and participate in the exchange programs and travel programs through the World Language Department and for the majority of our careers here. And right now, we run an exchange program that runs every other year. So it's always been our desire and hope to run a trip in those off-years. And in the past, we've done trips to Cuernavaca, Mexico. We offered one to Puerto Rico a couple of years ago. A fortunate timing with the hurricane. It didn't, wasn't able to take off. This time, and I have to, I'll let Irene talk about it because she did the legwork. She's found what seems like a phenomenal company, Walking Tree Travel, that offers trips to Costa Rica for what we're calling ecotourism or volunteerism-type trip that we can offer our students. And it really is quite exciting because of the combination of the cultural immersion, the language immersion, and the science, the biology, and the ecological emergence. So I'll let Ms. Tittmas talk about, a little bit about the company and the trip that she found.
Okay, so Costa Rica is known as the Switzerland of Latin America. They are a very peaceful country, and they're very ecologically conservative. And they're one of the few countries in the world that really does do a lot to conserve their natural environment. Walking Tree is a company that has traveled with students all over the world. They have been chosen by the Smithsonian Institute to partner up with their division, which is called SSA, the Smithsonian Student Adventure Program. And we have been in touch with a gentleman there by the name of Luke, who has actually gone to all of the countries and vetted out all of the guides, all of the hotels, all of the homestays. He's just, he knows the program very, very well. I had the opportunity to speak with a parent of two girls that have traveled with them. One of their daughters went to Buenos Aires, Argentina, and one of their daughters went to Guatemala. And she had nothing but really rave reviews for this company. We spoke about how she felt about the safety of her daughters, and she had all high marks across the board for the program. I also spoke with a student that traveled with them to Thailand on the 21-day program. And again, nothing but rave reviews. So we think that this is a really exciting opportunity for our students. And hopefully, if, when this trip takes off, it will hopefully be the program that runs in alternate years, because we've been working for a long time trying to find a good fit for the school and a good fit for our students. We truly believe that travel is one of the best ways for our students to learn about the world and to learn the language. So our ability to go to Valencia, Spain, every other year, thanks to the Lord, has been an exceptional program and has worked really, really well. We, you know, want to keep that going for as long as possible. But in the alternate years, it would be nice to have something else to offer. And as Christine said, we have gone to Cuernavaca, and that was lovely. It just, we just didn't feel like it was a good long-term fit for us.
Yeah, no. This just offers so many different hands-on experiences where that will hopefully leave a mark on these kids for the rest of their lives, no matter what they're doing for their careers. Although this company, I think, would love to see them all go into some sort of environmental protection-type career. But no matter what they do in any part of their lives, they're going to be able to carry that idea of conserving the natural environment and everything, and all the people who are touched by it for the rest of, you know, they'll take that lesson with them for the rest of their lives. So that's why we wanted to present this to you this evening.
Right, what a great way to really continue our work towards making our students global citizens. And we're not just working in another country, but working on their environmental programs to research sea turtles and sloths and monkeys. And I've been to Costa Rica. I've been to many of the areas that we will be going to. And I can speak from experience about what a beautiful country it is. And I took students there, actually, when I worked at Norton High School. And it was a wonderful experience. It's a beautiful country.
Costa Rica is one of the most stable of all of the Central American countries.
Yep.
Absolutely. And one reason I think it is extremely important that you find a, you know, a good replacement for the every other year, it is to continue the buildup of the enthusiasm for the language. I remembered we had one all set to go to Spain in the Gulf War. Well, the parents went like this. And I said, I don't want to lose that enthusiasm. So Mrs. Sandy Spinales was my chaperone with me. And we did go to, we chose, I chose Costa Rica. So they did the Atlantic, the Pacific, volcanoes, you know, the rainforests. And it was very successful, very successful, so. You know where my vote lies. You don't have to twist my arm.
I think you were ziplining too, Madam.
What?
I think you were ziplining, if I remember too.
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, Mrs. Spinales, and I, that was my first zip line.
First.
We went up and up and up in that tree, and I could just suddenly feel myself saying, you are really up high. And when you stepped out on this tiny ledge, you look down and you see nothing but leaves. You don't see the bottom. And I went, ah, and I hugged the tree. And I said, this isn't very cool. You're in front of your high school students. Get your composure. You've got to do that. Well, I'll tell you, once I let go, it was, it's the best swing ride you will ever have in your life. I loved it.
Did you see monkeys while you were up there?
No. Not, not, no, I was too concentrating on getting to the other side.
Alive.
Alive, yeah. And then, you know how people in control on the ropes like this love to tease somebody? Well, I would do it to a friend. I would not do it to an unknown person. Well, there's a young man guy, maybe late teens. And I said, oh, am I almost there yet? So he said, almost, and he stopped it. And then he started pulling me up again. Pulled me up and down a couple of times. I said, please.
I think that the ecological tourism thing is so great because in Spanish last year, we talked so much about that. So I'm really jealous, and I think that's awesome because.
And this program you found sounds great.
And the Smithsonian is great. So I think that like anybody who's taken Spanish with you or anybody who's taken Spanish at all in this school will definitely have a newfound appreciation for sustainable tourism. So I think that's awesome, and kids can learn a lot from that when they travel in the future. So it's really cool.
This will be over February vacation?
Yes.
But I see that you may be missing another week of school also, other, no?
Not a full week, probably a couple of days.
All right, so the provisions made for the students that miss.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for checking into it. Two call a parent of someone. You said you called a parent?
Yeah.
That's really cool. That's the right thing to do, you know, do the due diligence, you know.
I love the idea of this cleanup of the marine debris for the natural habitat of the sea turtles. I think that's relates a lot to what we are trying to get across in the civics part of science and, and the idea of innovation and sparking kids' curiosity or their desire to have a bigger impact than just beyond themselves. So I think that's a great added bonus of a trip like this. So kudos for finding the cross-curricular connections in.
I know, it's excellent. Any further discussion?
We'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty Foxborough Costa Rica Conservation Expedition.
Seconded?
All in favor? Con mucho gusto.
Muchas gracias.
Hasta luego.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
This looks like a great trip. Alrighty. Preliminary discussion of proposed FY twenty budget. Dr. Berdros and Mr. Yukna.
Okay, so this is, was just mentioned, our preliminary budget. So the first of three meetings that we will have, yes, being able to see the slides there, probably easier to. So what you have here in front of you is the timeline. So as you can see here, back in October, we had our first meeting. It was really more administrators with the town administration where we had an opportunity to kind of frame the budget, what are the, what are the goals for the budget? And then in November, had a joint meeting, as you know, from, with the Board of Selectmen and with school committee to review that revenue forecast. So going into more of what we had gone over in October, but a little bit more in detail. And then this most recent, our two subcommittee members, Marilyn and Tina, for a meeting with myself and Bill on the twelfth to really dig in more so to the budget itself and, and not probably to get into that level of detail tonight, but to go over exactly line by line and everything that's there is that, that first pass, if you will. And then tonight, we're here for our first public presentation for the preliminary overview. Our meeting for the advisory committee, so we have our liaisons for the AdCom. So Brent Rutteris, he's the lead. We have Michelle Raymond, Jen Frank, and Larry Uwe for our liaisons. And we will be meeting with them. We're trying to set up that date coming up soon. On the eighteenth, we have to have our full budget binders ready to the Town Finance Director. And then in January, those will be our second and our third meetings coming up, and that we need to then have that voted by the end of January. By law there to have that to go forward. And then have the advisory committee review, meet with them, and then the town meeting, which is set for May the thirteenth. So many meetings that have taken place so far and many still to come. So our overall budget message, it really doesn't change much year to year because our goal really is to maintain and continue to provide the same level of services for our students. Again, it's, it's really looking at what our current level of funding is and to work within that town budget framework. And to be able to adjust to the shifting student population and the related needs that, that come with our students and as our population shifts as well. But our philosophy really is consistent with the historical financial approach to the town and its strong commitment to education. And with that, our budget really reflects, reflects what our priorities are that are outlined in our strategic plan. And that is from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, so we're right in the middle of that plan. The four objectives, just to review those because it really is important. That, that frames our programming and where our priorities are. Our first one being to develop responsible global citizens, just, just right. You know, as far as another, one of the examples, by providing dynamic learning experiences within a rigorous curriculum that fosters high levels of achievement for all students. So all of the things that we're looking curriculum instruction, academic achievement. Our second objective, to continue to strengthen school culture, ensuring that students, staff, parents, and all stakeholders feel valued, safe, and importantly, have a voice. Our third objective, to enhance the district infrastructure and technological capabilities to provide an increasingly safe and supportive physical and innovative academic school environment. And our fourth objective, to maintain strong support for public education within the town of Foxborough. So when we look at this budget, it really is about maintaining reasonable class sizes, about preserving our current programs. You'll see that we're not suggesting any new programs. It's about maintaining our programs and our services to our students, including free universal full-day kindergarten, taking steps to be able to take those strategic objectives and move those forward with all of what we're currently working so hard on, addressing new and existing needs in special education as our growing student population in those areas and as needs shift. Also, participation in music. You'll see that we have a growing population at the middle school and sustaining students over time. That's been some shifts. This budget also addresses increased costs that has to do with technology tools when we look at any of the increasing costs from our subscriptions, our programs and software updates, et cetera, that really are important to maintaining our students for the future and making sure that we're staying current and that it enables importantly to be able to meet state guidelines in all aspects of public education.
The budget itself has always been the same as far as our format. We basically presented by programmer, school area. So it starts off with the borough school, goes into the IGO school. Everything is broken down in each one of those budgets. So the top section is a breakdown of all of the salary positions. The bottom section is all of the expenses for each one of those buildings or programs. One of the things that's been built into this budget for a number of years, and I'm going to say at least ten years, is there is an assumption that we will have through attrition of retirements, we will save one hundred and twenty-five thousand in our budget. The budget itself is built on the staff that we have today, and that's what we carry forward. We don't know who's retiring by the end of the year. We don't know if we'll beat that one twenty-five, but it's been a guideline. And I, and I started warning this a couple of years ago that we are now in the leaner period of teachers being up in that retirement, you know, ages and years of service. So we have fewer and fewer now that are up in that, that upper ranks. And really, the only way we make it now is if people decide to retire a little earlier than they would if they got to full retirement age. So it's a little tricky. We made it this year. It was really close. I anticipate next year will be close as well. But it will be something that we'll have to revisit and potentially make a modification to that moving forward that, in order to be able to make that work. We obviously, we use grants, revolving accounts, and the circuit breaker to offset some of the cost of the, of the project, of the budget itself. Our grants have always been under pressure. Most of the federal grants have started to slow and dry up and change. This year, we've stayed pretty stable, and we're looking to stay pretty stable in the grant area for next year. Our revolving account, the major change in that one is that we obviously have not been collecting kindergarten tuitions based on the program. We stopped two years ago, and this will be the final year of using up what was in that account in FY nineteen, which is the year we're in right now. And there will be no funds available to go into next year, and that's, now we will be fully supported by the town's budget for free kindergarten. And then, you know, and that's, that's, it is the fourth year. We basically said it was about ninety-five thousand a year. We kept a hundred thousand back in this last year just to make sure that we would be fine in the revolver. And it all worked out exactly as we had planned, so we're fortunate in that sense. But again, I think most of the parents, especially of the younger kids, are very appreciative to the fact that now there is free full-day kindergarten in the town of Foxborough. And again, we noted that years ago, but it's south of Boston was one of the few areas that really had maintained a tuition-based free kindergarten where north and west had been that way for years where it's been free. So we're, we're just kind of catching up with where a lot of the state has been for a number of years in that. The overall budget is, that's going to be funded by the town, is thirty-six million, one hundred eighteen thousand, nine forty-three. It's an increase of one point one million or three point two-two percent. And the majority of it obviously is in our payroll and salary area. And as I said, you won't see much of a change in those areas as far as staffing. We will talk about that. But most of it is just moving the existing staff forward between steps, lanes, and obviously anything that is negotiated in a cola.
So when we look at what is new, as I mentioned, there's no new programs or initiatives that require any additional staffing. So what we've looked at here are the needs that have changed since when we think about the last budget back in May, when the budget was passed at town meeting. And some of the position shifts that have taken place in order to attend to the needs of the students or our staff changes that are required in order to meet the students that we have in front of us. So after that budget's prepared, it's presented, and it's, it's voted, some things can happen. For instance, we have IEP meetings that take place in the spring. We've had a number of move-ins of students that come in on IEPs and being able to meet those needs. So what I'm going to go over here is some of those adjustments that have occurred after that FY nineteen budget was approved due to student enrollment and special education, specifically some of the IEP changes that take, that took place in the spring. And that was a result of a net reduction, actually, when we look at our teaching positions of one point eight. And how that comes to be is we had some reductions as far as based on enrollment in the IGO, in kindergarten, in grade four. We had a grade four reduction at Taylor. But then we also had a VHS, which is a point two position, and then a one point O special education teacher at the middle school. So with those additions and those subtractions, it's actually a net reduction of one point eight teaching positions. What we found at the middle school specifically is the caseload of our teachers in order to stay in compliance. We had an educational assistant that retired, and we needed to replace that educational assistant with a special education teacher in order to be able to meet the service delivery demands of the IEPs there. As far as educational assistants, we had an addition of one point O. We had some move-ins, some move-outs. We had some changes. But when all was said and done over that time period, there was an addition of one educational assistant in order to meet the requirements of an IEP. So for example, if we have a student that moves in and they have an IEP that requires a one-on-one educational assistant, by law, we have to follow that IEP. And then the second, or the last one in that first bullet there, an increase of point two speech and language therapists. Again, that goes back to the caseload for students requiring speech services. We had point two actually being contracted out in order to meet the demands of our number of students there. And by taking and increasing our own staff member by point two, then that would be able to meet those service delivery requirements in-house, if you will.
And I think it's important that, this is something that happens every year. Obviously, we have the largest budget in town relative to staffing and demands as far as how things change at any given point in time. But we have a fixed budget once we come out of, of the budget process. We are trying to, the best we can now, in December of two thousand and eighteen, tell you what is going to happen September first of two thousand and nineteen. So it's obvious that when we look at these programs, if we know for a fact that there's a change in a program, we're going to lay that out within the budget. But we have to monitor this, excuse me, from now until the end of the school year and even into the summer and make adjustments as adjustments are warranted. And sometimes it's that we don't get the enrollments on the kindergarten level because there's just, you know, there's not enough children to show up in a, in a class. It's very tricky with us with the elementary level because we have three neighborhood schools, which is coveted by the town. But it also makes it harder because you never know where the, the students are going to land. So you're always got a moving dice there as far as this whole thing goes. So I think this first point is, is an annual moving target that, you know, we're doing the best we can with the funds we are, have asked for to make sure that we can meet all the needs of the district once September first actually arrives.
The second bullet is the request for FY twenty for a increase of our current point five team chair at the middle school to increase to a one point O. This is a special education position. Team chair is the facilitator of all of your IEP meetings. They work for transitions between grade levels. In this particular case, at the middle school, transition of our students that are coming from fourth grade to fifth grade through transitions in the middle school and then eighth grade to ninth grade. We currently have a full-time team chair at the elementary level. We have a full-time team chair at the high school level. But we've been functioning, not well, but have been functioning with a point five team chair at the middle school. And it's really been a matter of piecing things together and having other people fill in. Sometimes it's a matter of having your principal or your assistant principal run some of those meetings. And so there's a real need to be able to take that point five team chair to make that position whole so that when we're looking at educational programs and transitions, we can really meet the needs of our students that are there. And it would then be equitable with our other schools as well. The third bullet, the increase in sustained participation in music, this is actually a really exciting one in that we have a fabulous music department, as you know. And what we've seen since the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year is slightly over a hundred student increase at the middle school of students that are staying in band or staying in chorus. As you, as you know, we have the electives and enrichment times where they have lessons in addition to their regular band or chorus times. And in order to have those periods to meet all of those students that are staying enrolled in either chorus or band, we need to be able to make sure that we have the staffing to be able to meet those needs. We have a point six person that's there. We, we have a real need based on those numbers to increase that to a point eight. Additionally, where Kami is the department head and she's a middle school teacher, that also has played into the scheduling at the middle school because she's really doing more of the teaching than she should be in her department head role in order to make that work. So with her not being at the high school, high school seven-day schedule, middle school six-day schedule, there's a number of scheduling challenges that take place. So then you might say, well, if she's there, can you take someone from the high school and move them? With our music electives, they're completely subscribed. So the good news is we have all of these students that are really enjoying and staying in music that weren't in the past. But we need to be able to meet the needs from staffing to be able to cover all of those class periods. So taking that point six person and moving them to point eight, we would be able to accomplish that.
So that means she's moving? No. She'll stay.
Kami's being, just being housed, if you will, as a middle school teacher, not as a high school teacher and where she's chorus versus where Mr. Massey was band. There's a number of scheduling, I mean, sorry, orchestra, thank you, to be able to make that work in all of the periods for electives and enrichments during the school day.
Her teaching load is higher than it should be for the proportional requirements of her department head role. So it would reduce that piece off of her so that she could spend more time in the department head. Does that make sense?
Lessons. Needed.
Yes. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out her schedule this year, and it was difficult.
A folder full of trying every which way we could to try to make it work. And she's doing more than she should be on top of her department head role.
As you saw, she's always here too, just as you saw this evening.
The fourth bullet targeted expense adjustments to account for service contracts as well as supply, maintenance, utility, and fuel costs. We'll get to that a little bit more specifically. And then also, we have six open contracts being negotiated this school year. That would be for FY twenty to FY twenty-two, which are our, our largest units, our teachers, our educational assistants, secretaries, transportation, food service, and extended debt. So again, overall, as far as what's new, it's not any new positions for programs or new initiatives. It's being able to attend and meet the needs of our current students and changing student needs.
As far as what's driving the incremental cost, as we talked about earlier, this is the fourth year of, of the full kindergarten, or free kindergarten, I'm sorry, which was originally targeted ninety-five thousand a year. So this will bring us into full support by the town for the balance of, of the kindergarten side. As Amy just said, we're in negotiations with six out of the nine units and obviously hope to be able to, within this budget, make that. hope to be able to, within this budget, make that work by the end of the year. You know, as far as staff adjustments, actually, there's a mistake there. That's 1.8 instead of 2.5. The, you know, changes we have here, as Amy just outlined, really are only two incremental changes. And again, they're program-based. They're not adding a new service to the district itself. The outside resources, as we also discussed, the only major change that we're forecasting for next year, and we're kind of keeping our fingers crossed with grants. The grant issue is kind of a funny one because we don't even know what our grants are going to be until September, sometimes not even until after that. So, you know, there's no precursor on what they think is going to happen. So we have to kind of go on our best estimate and our best guesses again. We haven't seen any real increases. The only thing that we could possibly hope for on an increase would be the Title I. And that depends on where our community ends as far as the poverty level things. We've teetered just over a few years ago, and we were able to add half a position in the reading side. Unfortunately, we teetered back and lost that position. But that's what we would obviously use it for. If we were to get it back, we'd try to supplement that program. But as far as grants go, that's really the only one that we see at this point that has an opportunity to move upward. Everything else, if there's anything, it's downward pressure. So here's a comparison. We give you a number of years, obviously, so you can see what the dollar differences are from year to year, as well as the percent change. You know, for FY20, the 3.22% is kind of lower end of where we have been for a number of years. Last year was a banner year, really, at 2.6%. And again, it's not something we drive. It's really something that the salary schedules and positioning of our teachers in the different locations on the steps and scale itself kind of drive. So in any given year, that can fluctuate up and down a little bit. We do have about 58% of our teaching staff at the top step. So we still have a number, obviously, that are moving in the lower steps, potentially going not only steps but going lanes, educational lanes, if they are doing that in any given year. So there's some changes in that sense.
What percent did you say was at top step?
About 58%.
58%?
I think the, you know, the issue here really is that, obviously, we know we run the largest budget. We know that our increases, even at a, you know, a 3% are a large increase. So we try to do our best to, obviously, hold the budget down in any areas that we can. But, you know, this is really for a program that basically is level-funded in service levels, if you will. This is really the cost of that. The two changes that we made are minor in dollar values. If you took both of the .2 and the .5 position, you're not even looking at $60,000. So that's not what's moving this number in the large scale. As far as our enrollments, you know, we have been on a downward trend for a number of years. We are starting to see the, you know, the developments are all that we've been talking about for the last couple of years have all come to fruition where they're starting to be built. And I would say within the next year or two, we'll start to see, obviously, the residents from those locations. I think last year, when we projected that for you, there was five major developments. The last one that's really getting going is the one that's up, I can't think of the name of it, it's right off of Main Street there, closest to Route 1. And they've just started putting in the houses up there.
How many houses?
Eleven units are going to go in.
Eleven.
Eleven large houses that are going in there.
It used to be a big horse farm, didn't it?
Yes, it was.
Oh, they were gorgeous.
It was the judge's property up there. You obviously have the one across from Dairy Queen, which is now almost fully built out. A lot of young families were already moving some of the kindergarteners in and stuff like that. So you're going to have that. You have the other large one that's off of Coke Acid Street that is 22 units that now, I think, is pretty close to complete. There's only about two left to be built, and people are starting to move into all of those. And obviously, the, what's it called, the one behind the 99, which is
Hanover?
Hanover. Is producing about what we expected. Lodge produced 27 students, even though it's 240 units. The Hanover is about 240 units as well, and right now, we have about 21 students. So we're not, you know, nothing's happening different than what we had projected would happen in those, either one of those two. So, but I think now that you're starting to see a lot of these developments actually come through, there's a small six-unit one that's going in. The first three are already being built right across from Stop &amp; Shop. So, you know, again, these are all going to be for FY20. They will all be completed, and we will start to see the enrollments, I think, from those houses probably over the next two and three years.
How many will be, five or six across from Stop &amp; Shop?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. It's a cluster build.
They're fitting six houses in there?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was under the 40, the last, one of the last of the 40B projects that was, we didn't have enough until that one actually got built. So now we're over the percentage, but under the 40B, they're allowed to differ from our zoning. So basically, it's, I think it's a one-and-a-half acre site that has six units on it.
They're just stuffing them all in there?
Yeah.
Wow.
So.
Yeah, it's amazing.
And the one out on, off of Coke Acid Street's also 40B. So it's a compressed area with 22 housing units on it. But since the Hanover did get built, they made our requirement for 40B fulfill it, so we no longer have that risk unless the town decides to accept the 40B project. So now it's up to the town versus being a right of law.
Do the voters get to vote on that, or is that a Board of Selectmen decision?
I believe it's a Board of Selectmen decision. So we're projecting about 16 down for next year. Obviously, you know, that can change based on move-ins. I think it's fairly reasonable. It will be spread across the 12 grade levels and won't obviously have a major impact on any one of the buildings because even if you lost 16 in one building, it wouldn't make that big a difference. But in this case, what we've seen typically is that it's one or two in a building, and it makes up the difference, so.
Before we move on from this slide, the one other notable thing, I, looking at this, is the increase in out-of-district placements and the impact that it's had on our budget in the last six years.
Yes.
I think that's worth addressing.
I think that's, I think it's very important. I think we were on a very good trend by developing our own programs internally, which actually helped us to bring back a number of students.
Few years ago.
Yeah. What we have seen is an increase in some of the severity of some of the children, which even with our programs that are, that have been handling some of them, we, once they get to a certain level, we can't, our program no longer is able to exist in that basis form. So they do end up going out-of-district. As you said, the out-of-district you're going to see later on in this presentation is, for the first time since I've been here, actually has not only exceeded our number but has gone beyond it and pushed the limits. In programs, when you're, when you're talking about an out-of-district program, the low end of an out-of-district program is probably $35,000 to $40,000 in tuition and about $30,000 in transportation. The high end can be as much as $300,000, $350,000. So it's really depending on the needs of the child and the program that they have to be in, and whether it's a day program or a residential program. And, you know, that's what really will drive these numbers and exactly how many you have in each one of those. The relief you get on that is through what is called the circuit breaker, which we've talked about before, which is a state program effectively is one of our outside resources. And what happens with that is the first rough, we'll say $44,000, the first $44,000 is basically our responsibility. Above that, it becomes really a split between us and the state. So, you know, if, when it includes not only the out-of-district tuition, but it includes the transportation. So you basically can get into a point where, in any given year, you're getting money back from the previous year because it's always a year in arrears. So as an example, you'll see in our budget, there's about $513,000 that we're expecting, that we actually got as of June 30th of last year from our audit that we'll spend this year. And then depending on what we spend this year, we'll get a portion back next year. So we're always using that money a year in arrears so that, you know, we can cover this. The advantage to that is we always try to keep one year of circuit breaker, just like we do with the revolving accounts. And quite honestly, fortunately, we do that because this year, when we actually went by the budget, we've already used $60,000 of next year's circuit breaker. So we have that flexibility, which if we didn't have that philosophy, we would not have it, and it would put us into a real bind. That's why a lot of communities are creating the stabilization accounts, you know, for out-of-district tuitions because they don't do what we do, and therefore, they're trying to get the town to put money away into a special fund so that when that does happen, they can tap that fund. We've kind of created it in a reverse way. We've just done it by saying we're not going to touch, and we've done that for years and years, and that's a good philosophy, I think, that the town has had. As far as staffing, you know, changes, and this is again, this is against the actual for 2019. As Amy said earlier, there was a number of changes that we had to make in 2019 to make the programs all work. So really, the only two changes we're looking at are the .2 regular ed teacher, which is the music teacher at the Ahern, and the .5 middle school team chair. As far as components within the budgets on the major side of things, of the 1.127818, it's broken down into two pieces, expenses and salaries. As I said before, you can see that the majority of the increase is in the salary lines. Obviously, the $95,000 was all salaries for kindergarten teachers that we were supporting, so that's part of that million dollars. It also includes, obviously, what we're, you know, what we're carrying for negotiations for this year, as well as what any steps or lanes that we already have. The expense adjustments, you know, really are very, very targeted, and you're going to see down below here, there's a couple very significant ones that are, it's not things that we're trying to advance a program or we're trying to do something different. As Amy said, even on the expense side, we're doing very similar to what we're doing on the salary side, and that is covering the current requirements that we have. So the first two are the out-of-district. You can see that we're proposing $117,000 just in out-of-district placements. $62,000 of that are already occurring this year, and I'm going to re-occur that next year. So it's only leaving me about a $40,000 cushion in that area. My out-of-district transportation, right now, I'm right on the line as far as our budget. And based on what I'm expecting to happen next year, I'm expecting we're going to need more money because not only is the contract for the out-of-district carrier going up, they got a 2% increase in their contract for next year, but I'm also expecting we're going to have a little bit more of a need relative to our schedule of children that are outside. The homeless transportation is a state requirement. That fluctuates, it's, the first couple of years it was out there, we were in the 25 to 30 range. It dropped back down to 10 to 15. Last year, we were back in $25,000. We had pushed it down to 15, so we're going to push it back up to 25 because it's obviously a cost that we're going to incur.
And homeless transportation means?
That means a family that lived in Foxborough that, for whatever reason, is displaced and ends up in another community. We have to then still allow those children to come back to our school until they can get their situation straightened out. So, you know, think about a family that might have had a couple of kids that maybe is a senior this year, and they just happened to get displaced for a period of time. Rather than make them bounce to a new school district, the state has it set up that we would bring them back into our school district for that period of time. Obviously, the hope is that it's not a long time, but, you know, it depends on each family's situation. The only good thing about it is that, again, in the following year, so far, the state has been paying 50% of whatever you incurred that year in back to the town. But unfortunately, that goes to the general fund. It does not come to the schools. So it is part of what we get, obviously, but it's a piece of the puzzle that at least it's not just leaving the town. There is a portion that the state is still supporting, if you will. We have been running at about $2 a gallon for our vehicle fuel. Obviously, the town pays a lot less because we don't pay taxes like general people do at the pumps, so, because we are a municipal entity, so, and we also buy on long-term contracts. We are now up to about $250 a gallon, and so that's going to push our total vehicle usage. Again, we have roughly 28 buses on the road and roughly eight or nine vans, trucks, and other vehicles that are on the road. So our fuel cost is going to go up about $18,500. The repair line is strictly what we're seeing for parts. Most of it's on buses, and, you know, even though we have a pretty, a pretty good, you know, cycle of replacing buses, we are still trying to push buses to 100,000 miles in 10 years or very close to that, depending on their condition. So obviously, at any point in time, you can have, you know, issues go wrong with a bus that you want to make sure is fully safe. The heating, last year, we took a real beating because what happened was we came off of contract and we were just floating at the given rate. And it basically, we went over our heating budget last year by about $15,000. And it was strictly a matter of the fact that the rate just kept moving month to month.
It was a very cold spring, too.
It was a cold spring. So, but what we had always done as a town is we'd always gone out to bid and locked in contracts. So I asked, you know, the town side to kind of put our group back together and go out to bid again, which we did. And in October, we secured another three years' worth of fixed-rate gas prices. And even though it's an increase to us, quite honestly, I think we would have been a lot higher if we stayed outside of that, based on what's going on with the economy, what's going on with fuel costs. So it's going to cost us $34,000, but really, that's probably the number for the next three years because of the lock. The rate is locked for three years. It's not going to fluctuate, and at least we know now that we won't get, you know, further behind. And then the final thing was that in the development of the solar farms by the town, the Elm Street one and the Belcher Road, the old dump, we were the biggest beneficiary to that because we had the largest electric bills in the town. So each one of our buildings gets credits from both of those solar farms and, just as the Joint Public Safety, Town Hall, and a few other buildings in town get the library. But again, we were the biggest users. We're open more hours, we're much bigger facilities. I think we represent 550,000 square feet of facilities. The rest of the whole town doesn't even represent 200,000, so it's much, you know, skewed in our fashion, in our favor. But the hope was that we would actually be able to save $150,000. And right now, that looks exactly like what we will say. I will thank the town side because they allowed us to use the credits from last year to actually pour it back into the electric initiatives that we were doing. So all of our buildings now are LED-lighted inside and outside. We have upgraded the IGO and the Taylor heating systems and plants with brand-new boilers. Again, both of those were, well, the Taylor was about 60 years old.
Missed legs.
Yep. So we've done, we were able to do a lot of work with that saving. So the town actually is going to benefit in two ways, where we've used solar credits to basically advance the town's energy savings, and that should help us in saving more money as we move into the next couple of years with these initiatives. So those are the major expense changes. The other, the other changes that we did, and we started doing this last year, and I'm trying to get this as close as I possibly can, and that is, over the years, things change. Obviously, our technology changes. You know, we have now more money that we're spending in software licensing and maintenance than we were a number of years ago. We don't buy textbooks the way we did before, but we buy textbooks that also have electronic versions, which have licenses and correction, you know, of the budgets to that as well. So we've gone down through every, every single department. So when you look at your actual detailed sheets, you'll see something that's changing by $1,500 on one account, but it's going up by $1,500 on another account because that's where we're really spending the money. So we're just adjusting the money more into the right account that's actually being spent to. And one of the things I've really pushed for all the departments is to be very consistent where they put the money, you know, where they put their expenses. Because, you know, the worst thing that can happen is they buy something today, and next year, they buy it under a different account. I lose track of where, why this money is spent the way it is. Now, we've got a pretty good track going right now, and again, when you look through the budget, you'll see movement up and down within the Taylor, within the IGO, within the Borough, within the high school, and within any of the department. But it's the same numbers effectively moving within that department to get it clarified. So we have to do less transfers during a given year.
That's good.
So I think we're getting very close on it now. We're much less than we did last year, and the actual numbers for FY18 are coming much closer in those departments. So I think we're doing pretty well with that. As we said, the only, what we have is an offset of money that As we said, the only... What we have is an offset of money that we bring back in to support the budget itself. The revolving accounts are things like, you know, the extended day summer programs. You know, their... I wouldn't say food service because that's a totally separate budget. But, you know, athletics, building rental, and so on. And those funds that come in on an annual basis are then put into the next year's to help pay off part of the next year's budget. The grant funds are, as we said, you know, a lot of federal, a few state grants there. They've really dwindled down. I think we're down to about five grants left. There was a time when there was about 10 of them, but they've kind of gone away. And then circuit breaker, as I just described, is really the state's kind of rescue on some of the cost under the sped side for out-of-district tuitions. Unfortunately, we've had a downward trend in this area as far as how we're helping to supplement the budget. And it's been a downward trend for a number of years. You know, I think the... There's no bright side in something new coming forward as far as additional funding that we see, at least from the federal side. When you look at an allocation of our budget, the way it's spent, I did break this down a little bit further. We were doing whole percentages in the past. And quite honestly, I don't think that's right because even a small change in a department makes a percentage change to other departments. So... And the example was the larger gold area was 58% last year is what it was showing. It was really just under 58%, but now it's dropped a little bit further. However, the special ed up in the upper area, which is showing 25.6, last year was closer to 25%. So I think it's more important that we really show how this is really breaking out. And I think, you know, again, we're seeing a little bit of a shift, you know, with our needs within the special ed area. You know, it is... Most of it is state and federally mandated as far as what we're doing. And I think we have a good program. I think we do better than most communities as far as having internal programs to try to keep our students within the school district itself, in their own neighborhood schools. But, you know, you're not always able to do that. And, you know, that's... This is one of the trends that we're starting to see, and we're looking for ways to obviously drive some. I think, again, the... Having the team chair is not really meant to be a money saver, but in effect, what it is really is a way of managing and being consistent in how you apply IEPs in the program offerings by having somebody who is very knowledgeable at the table about what is available. And that really can have an impact in different areas within the special ed budget.
Because that's really... That's someone who's helping manage and look at what services within the grid on IEPs and looking at the programs and being able to maximize what we have as far as the potential of our students and to best meet their needs, but in a way that we're really allocating our time and resources effectively and efficiently.
And would that person be helping with the students' transition from elementary to middle school and then also from middle school to high school?
Absolutely. So you have that communication piece. So especially when you're coming off, let's say you have a service delivery that looks at, you know, so many times, so many minutes. At an elementary schedule, it's very different from a middle school. You have better communication and collaboration that's going to take place. Also, that person is a liaison with your regular ed teachers that are servicing students in their room, and they can better plan to meet the students' needs to where then the students have a more successful experience, but just by coordination and the collaboration that takes place.
Makes sense.
It's really needed in the middle school.
I could say, though. That's exactly correct.
Absolutely.
With great coordination and great identification and supports, that could pay for itself in great service in response.
It could, but I think...
You can't bank on it.
No.
I respect that. I'm not trying to give money.
The efficiencies that are there and making sure that you have the continuity of service.
I think the most important thing is having one person... You know, when you're trying to piecemeal it now and bringing other people into play, they may not have, you know, as they're coming into that meeting, the full knowledge of everything that's available. By having somebody who is dedicated to that, like we do on the elementary and on the high school level, you have a better chance of the parent fully understanding what options are available to them and getting the resources, as well as us supplying the resources that we know we have within the community to do that. And I think you'll find that most parents that we have within our special ed area really want their children to be within the district if we can do it right. And so we need to be able to show we can do it right and to be able to show what those services are and be very succinct when you're talking to a parent and doing it. So I think this is a strong way of doing that. And I think, you know, to your point, yes, it can make a difference there, but it's, you know, our hope is that it just helps us to maintain where we are today and if not, you know, improve a little for what the parents will get out of it and the students.
As well as the teachers, just with the collaboration there, that quality of service.
I think it just stacks the deck and everybody's favor so that we can have a better chance of success.
Absolutely, exactly.
Love this chart.
So as we started with the timeline in the beginning, where we're about a third of the way through, our next steps are for us to continue to review what we have. This was preliminary first sweep of the budget here. Monitor to see if there's any revenue changes that are available. Then your review of the budget, the January 7th meeting after the new year, and then the vote and public hearing on January 28th, and then present the budget to AdCom on January 30th.
Amy, do you have a superintendent's coffee scheduled in January? I apologize because I'm asking this. Because I know typically, we try to be very transparent in our budget process. We are very transparent. And I know generally, we've had you and I believe Mr. Utna come and answer any questions that our community members might have, you know, during the January, February timeframe when we're talking about budget.
Could we go with the night ones or just the morning ones? I can only remember the morning ones.
We've discussed it at both.
I'm pretty sure we've done it at the night ones as well.
The next one is February 12th, but that's the morning one.
So there must be a night one in January, then, right?
I didn't see it on the calendar. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
Well, it was just a thought.
February 12th is the morning one?
Say that again?
February 12th, you said, is the morning one? Correct.
I actually think we have discussed it at both.
We have.
I'm positive the morning ones. I wasn't sure about the top.
I was fairly certain that the next evening one was in March, but I... Again, I could be wrong.
There's four of them as far as the evening meetings, so that sounds right.
It looks like March 5th.
Right. Well, that's a great... That would be a great opportunity to talk about budget issues with the general public.
So I think from our perspective, our typical next step with you, obviously, is our next meeting on the 7th. But between now and then, you know, again, the budget subcommittee, obviously, has an open line with us. But we encourage the rest of you also, if there's questions you have within the lines that you, you know, don't understand something or you want more clarity to, you know, once you're going through the detailed sheets on the programs, please feel free to give us a call. Usually, when one of you does that, I will send out an email to all of you so that you know what the question was and what the answer was because I'm sure if one has a question, the others probably do too. So... But I think that way, if we do that, then when we come to the 7th again, if we need to make any adjustments or changes at that point in time, that would really be the opportunity to do it so that as we march towards the 28th, you're really comfortable with the budget that you're presenting. Again, this is your budget. As much as we do a lot of the light work, it's the school committee's budget, so.
Thank heaven you do the light work.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you for all that work and the good presentation. He gets a chance to talk some more, right?
Just what you want.
For MSBA.
Okay. Maintaining our status of making sure the school committee is in the loop and approving the different phases as we come through here. The last phase you approved was the project scope and budget agreement, which was back in the August timeframe. That agreement basically was the basis for what I'm presenting tonight, which is the project funding agreement. That project scope basically said that we were, or you were, in agreement with the scope of the actual work that was going to be done on the Borough, the additions and renovation work that was going to be done, and that you understood that the MSBA at that point in time had agreed to a percentage. The percentage was 56.1%, 56.01%. And the... They had pre-populated with a... Two budget numbers. The first one being an estimated total facilities grant and the second one being a maximum total facilities grant. This agreement that you are now being asked to approve memorializes that and puts that into contract form, that this is now the contract between us as a town and the state, that this is what they definitely are going to do and move us forward. So as I said, it's the same percentage that you'll see spelled out on page six of the agreement itself. And it has the same dollar numbers. So the estimated total facilities grant is $14,689,542. The maximum total facilities grant is $15,331,279. This assumes that the current budget numbers that we are working with, which are obviously estimates based on the documents we've prepared so far, two separate estimators developed those numbers independently and then reviewed them together to make sure that they all lock in, that if we are fortunate enough to hit those exact numbers when we actually go out to bid, then this is what the state would reimburse us. If we were even more fortunate and the numbers were to be much lower, the state gets its portion back too. So, you know, if that were to... Just let's just say that their percentage was 50%. Ours was 50%. If we came in a million less, they'd get $500,000 less than this, and we'd get $500,000 less than what we would pay. So that's been... That's the way it's always worked. That's the way it worked on the high school when we came in a few million dollars, $3 million under on the original estimate. They got their $1.5 million first before anybody. So, you know, we shared in that setup. So this agreement basically highlights all of that. It's a lot of legal mumo jumbo, which I'm sure you've looked through already, and how this goes. But you'll also see that the town's attorney has given his legal opinion on the authorization that not only does the town manager have the right to sign the agreement, that the school committee has the right to accept this agreement and to process under and work underneath this agreement. So I think we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's on this. And so what I'm looking for is a vote by the school committee to accept the project funding agreement as issued by the MSBA to the town of Foxborough.
I would move that.
You got that wording right.
You got the wording. I didn't want to repeat it.
And then Bill, does the chair of the school committee sign the agreement?
No, the actual... The agreement, the MSBA has certain things that get signed by the town, certain things that get signed by it. So the actual agreement is signed by the town manager for this particular contract. Okay. Other ones you have signed on. It depends on where it is in the...
In the cross...
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Excellent. I second Ed Rich, which is...
Okay. Any further discussion? Vote? 4-0-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, acceptance of donations.
So we have three donations for you to accept. The first one being a Partners in Patriotism, PEP, grant. That was a grant that our nurses had put forward. And it was for CPR mannequins that were more up to date. And technologically, you know, with our times, things have changed. So it was a generous donation of $551.40 to be able to update those. They had a photo op. I know Allison was in the picture as well.
Is her name still Annie? Wasn't it Annie way back in the day, or am I dating myself?
No, I remember.
Thank you.
I do. I do.
A little odd here.
So that was a generous donation to make sure that we are up to date in our nurses for their CPR training. Yes.
Do we use the same mannequins in our health classes when our kids get certified with CPR? So it's wonderful for not just the nurses, but for our students as well.
Yes.
Fantastic. I'll make a motion that we accept the donation in the amount of...
What?
Fond memories.
What's her name, Annie?
He wouldn't remember. He's too young for that, but I'm with you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Partners in Patriotism fund donation in the amount of $551.40 for CPR mannequins.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
With gratitude.
Always.
Or 0-0. We always add that.
Our second donation is the Foxborough Kickers Club. This is one of those when they're adding an additional coach. This is a stipend for an assistant coach for the Foxborough High School varsity soccer for $2,000.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation for the Foxborough Kickers Club in the amount of $2,000 for the assistant Foxborough varsity girls' soccer coach.
I'll second that.
All in favor? With gratitude.
And then our third donation is a little bit different in that it is a clarinet donation from Christine Doyle. And she would like to donate a clarinet to the Foxborough High School or to the Foxborough Public Schools Music Department, and that it is worth approximately $200.
I would like to move to accept the donation of a Buffett B-12 clarinet from Christine Doyle for the Foxborough Music... Foxborough Public Schools Music Department with gratitude.
I'll second it.
All in favor? 4-0-0, thank you.
Everyone has a roll. Everyone has a roll.
I think back to my clarinet with the Bundy.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
That's an old one.
All right, we are now on to other.
Do I have a couple of things?
Please, go right ahead.
I don't know if anyone got this in their newspaper, the STEAM Experience in Easton. Anyone interested in it? A lot of our students go to it every year. Info sessions are on January 12th, 26th, February 9th at 10:00 a.m. It's a presentation at Stonehill College. I think it came with the newspapers or maybe in the flyers in the mail or something. Comes every year, and I know a lot of people use that. And I missed a party last week because I was... There's relevance here. I missed a party last week because I was in Florida visiting my father-in-law, and my friend was posting pictures. She hired our string quartet, which raised money for the Australian trip. So she's going to do it every year. She really... She said it was unbelievable. The feedback she got was amazing. They got paid to do it. She said they were top-notch. And there was a chaperone with them at the time, so isn't that lovely? I didn't know we did that. So it was pretty fascinating to me that they were allowed to do that.
That's great.
Yeah. So anyone having any holiday parties, think of our music department and help pay for the trip to Australia. Happy holidays, everybody.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, my, there's so much that has gone on since our last meeting. I don't even know where to start. I'll play off a Maryland thing. I think our musicians played at the Bass Pro Shop over this past weekend. So they are getting around and getting out there to raise money. And they're planning their big gala for, I believe it's Friday, February 1st, at the Lakeview. So that is their next upcoming big fundraising event. And hopefully, we'll all get to go. I'm planning on going February 1st. It's, yeah, the Friday of Super Bowl weekend. So hopefully, it'll be a big weekend here in Foxborough. And I guess we haven't met since before Thanksgiving. So congratulations to our football team for their big Fenway victory. Awesome. We haven't been together since then. That was awesome. Fantastic.
I know, and how fortunate.
Great way to go. I've seen it a year, huh?
My blood pressure was going through the roof for a solid...
How many overtimes?
Three. They won in the third overtime.
We were supposed to be off the field by like, I think it was 9:30 at night. We ended up leaving Fenway at about midnight, so...
One for the history books, definitely.
But fortunately, you was scheduled as the last football game. Can you imagine if you had been the first team to play that day and it was three and a half hours long?
Sun would be coming up, yeah.
No, but you know, it would have just bumped the others way late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll never forget that, though. That was an amazing experience.
Great memories.
Fantastic. And a holiday concert was last Thursday. Beautiful.
Winter, winter.
Yeah.
Oh, isn't that tomorrow at the school?
Yes, actually, I think they're performing in school this week, that's right.
What time?
I think... Well, they have like a huge chunk set out in the schedule. It's like 8:30 to 11:30, but I doubt it's going to take that long. But it's going to be sometime then.
Yeah, I think you're right. That's this week. And then, of course, the brass musicians will be doing the... And our choir does the caroling on the clement on Thursday. So I think that covers all the music events that are coming up.
So the caroling is this Thursday?
This Thursday at 6:00, I believe. It's one of my favorite...
Do they still go to the Doolittle after like they used to?
They do.
Okay. I'm talking in a couple of years.
I'm down a couple of years.
I think the middle school's got concerts tomorrow, too, right? 5th grade or 6th? Yeah, one of the, the music concerts.
I think 5th.
That's great. That's great.
Just so many.
Lots of music.
Lots of music. A 5th grade concert is always amazing, because you go in, I know I felt my kids could not read any music in September, when they started school, and then by December, they've got a whole concert they're performing in. It is, it's really amazing what they do.
The middle school, in particular, music, too, when you, when you go to those concerts, you listen to the faculty, they talk, they're able to explain what's happening every year.
Right.
Right? So, there's, the chorus teacher, I went to one, not this year, but last year, and she explained that we use, you know, two-part harmony. Now, we're in three-part harmony. And the steps are very clear, so it's really, it's a great, that's what's interesting about the middle school. They really talk about those foundations, right?
And you watch the growth.
Yeah, but the faculty does a great job of setting it up.
That's all I have.
Do I have anything else?
I was just going to mention the concerts, the Carolina Common, but good luck to the athletes. They're about, they're 10 or 11 days into the winter season now. So, it's, you know, if you have nothing to do over the next couple of weeks, there's, there's got to be hockey, and basketball, and plenty of.
Basketball home opener tomorrow night?
Yeah.
For the boys. The girls had their home opener last week, so.
We have a big swim meet on Friday, if anyone wants to.
Yeah. Yeah, the swim team did very well.
Actually, so. We're like undefeated.
Unexperienced.
That's great. That's awesome.
Undefeated is a good word.
So far, only two beats, but we'll take it, so.
Absolutely.
Better send a little of your luck over to the Patriots.
It'll rub off, hopefully.
Well, in the spirit of Budget Night, I thought I would share a little bit about a project we've been working on, to sort of build a pathway for computer science and engineering and biomedical science from the middle school to the high school, to sort of garner more interest in those paths. So, we are looking at the program called Project Lead the Way. And Dan and Brozio and I, our tech integration specialists at the middle school, worked on a grant to be creative about getting some funding to start that program. So, we know we have been awarded the grant. We are in phase two of the project. We don't know what our exact amount is yet, but the hope is to sort of revision some of our electives for our students at the middle school in 7th and 8th grade, to give them these opportunities in computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. So, we're pretty excited about it. Yes.
In 7th and 8th grade?
7th and 8th grade.
Will that build to high school then after?
That's the plan.
Oh, that's great. What a great program.
Yeah, it actually can go both ways. It's a K-12 program. So, the commitment is that within three years, you have 75% of the students involved in the program. So, it would probably move down to 6th, and then go up to the high school. But we're in infancy of, we're just happy we got the grant.
Why does it come first?
Oh, yeah. It comes from, the MassSTEM hub is partnered with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to support this. And this is their program of choice through the Massachusetts Department of Ed. And there are many districts in the Commonwealth who are using this. And we actually, there's a long history here that we've been visiting other districts that are using it. And we looked at other programs, but this seems to be the best fit. We know that the kids will really be engaged with it. It's very hands-on, minds-on, critical thinking, problem-solving, different from sort of what we've done in the past, so.
I like it. It's at the middle level, too. That's, that really is excellent.
We want to hook them.
I got involved in that years ago at the high school level, but I can see the value at the middle level, and that age group.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Build a pipeline, so that we can.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. That's really good.
And just, you want to share from the student, superintendent, student advisory council, what some of.
Well, you can share. Yeah.
So, Allison and I were meeting with the students last week, and just trying to get their interest as far as, what did they think as far as 7th and 8th grade? Because even though we've got freshmen through seniors, they all had the same experience through like APP tech, and what that looked like in content. So, to hear them talk about that, you're having memories back to.
The plastic, what they have.
That's exactly, extruder. It's the extruder, yes. That's what they were talking about, actually.
And we just, we had some really good discussion about pathways, like Allison's saying, but what are some things that would help garner their interest in the courses they took going forward? When we look at our computer science course that we have at the high school, when we look at our engineering course, what is it that, about those courses that either pique their interest, or don't, or how we can have them more interested based on that pipeline, as she's saying?
And they felt that the curricular experiences they were having were a little dated, and they weren't as relevant as they could be. And we're very interested in making everything that we do relevant and applicable to the real world. And that's what this Project Lead the Way does. And it also has a civics component, where you're making devices for people who have disabilities, or you're helping a community find sustainable food growth. So, it's really, the big picture is really exciting. So, we'll keep you updated as things evolve.
Great, great. Thank you. So, I had just three quick things. One, one of our students for our teaching and learning highlight that we had in November, had the time, a little off, and wasn't able, she got here right as they were finishing up. But she had written, and you have this under your packet here, and I just wanted to take a moment and to read it.
I was hoping you would.
From Emma Hartford here. So, she was one of our kindergartners at the time, who did the digital storytelling, and then presented as a first grader at MasQ. So, she, and speaking of the MasQ conference, I liked the one because the camera attached to it. Also, I liked telling, I'm sorry, the drone. I liked the drone because the camera attached to it. Also, I liked telling the superintendent what I did. I wrote and illustrated the story on PowerPoint. I got to see the Patriot Stadium, and I had lunch with my friends, Jamison and Liam. I liked to operate the, mine's cut off on my something.
Yeah, mine got cut off, too.
Bot. Something with a bot net.
It's with the bot. It's just like the little robots there. With someone's phone, even the color. We each got $100 squishy. I even made my own video game with a robot collecting coins. So, she didn't get to present that night, so I wanted to make sure she had.
And the $100 squishy, just so you know what that is. It's like one of those stress balls, but it looked like $100.
Huge.
Oh.
Oh, I thought it was like a high-level squishy. That would like help me so much.
To disappoint you.
Did you see that?
Have you seen like the $100 that are like the erasers that they give you?
I was like, I thought.
I wonder why the budget was going up so much. It was budget tonight, so I was thinking monetary, too, not just.
We have a theme. We're very sorry we missed Emma.
Yes. And thank you for writing the note for us. And Emma, if you're watching this, it's a great note.
That's great. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention, the AHRN, they're lucky, they've been selected a couple of times here for some things that are coming up. One, the NAP, which is the Nation's Report Card. They've been selected to participate. That will take place January to March. So, that's the assessment that takes place in 4th and 8th grade. We don't know exactly what's going to take place there, but we've been selected for the NAP assessment, the Nation's Report Card.
The Nation's Report.
And then the second thing that they've been randomly selected for, which is the Massachusetts Youth Health Survey, which, this is a survey that will be administered to two randomly selected classrooms. It'll be sometime early in 2019. We'll send out letters. Parents can, if they choose to opt out their students, they can, but actually, the Department of Ed comes in, and they administer the survey. So, it's a lengthy survey that really gets into questions as far as health, good habits. It will also ask questions about electronic cigarettes, and smoking, and some of the things that we've done in the risk surveys as well. But it's a survey that's done across Massachusetts, and that will take place in two randomly selected 6th grade classes, 6th through 8th grade, but sometime in early January. There's 116 schools that were selected, and we were one of them.
Great. One of 116. I just want to reiterate, what a wonderful community we live in, and the support that people continue to give each other. I had, I don't know if I want to say privilege, but I attended Peg Weisker's wake and colation. She was a longtime teacher of Latin and Spanish here at high school, and she had four children. So, I got to see many of my former students. They all, they all came from surrounding communities to support their friends. And it was really lovely. And she is the little gal at 90, who was, who was driving around the Common once in a while in a little red convertible with her top down, if you ever saw her. And her, yeah, Mrs. Weisker, she wouldn't.
That would be me, Mrs. Weiss, will be doing that at 90 in her white convertible.
Oh, in her white convertible. And she would pull up to Mass in that little red convertible at St. Mary's. It was, it was classic. And her oldest grandchild said, yes. You know, I'd say, sure, Graham. And then we'd get in, and she'd say, come on, we're going for a ride in the car, and we're getting a double espresso at 90.
Oh, 90.
Yeah. I want to say how, isn't that great? I want to say how nicely the, all the track, and so far, those bleachers look beautiful.
They do. Definitely need to mention that.
Are we going to, are we going to get a chance to have a tour of the box?
Sure.
The press box? I would like to do that sometime.
Amy hadn't gone in. You'd gone in. You had to have gone in.
Amy, you hadn't gone in the last meeting we were at. Have you gone in yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Yeah, we needed a little tour of that.
I think we need.
It's supposed to be beautiful inside.
Right. Joe?
Will the press box ever be painted blue and gold?
No. It's pre-painted, the white color that it is.
Good question, though, Joe.
Okay.
Very good.
He looks so tired.
And whatever holiday you celebrate, I hope it is a joyous one, and a peaceful one, and you all have a blessed New Year.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
I'll make.
Rich.
I'd like to move to adjourned.
I'd like to second that.
That's my.
All in favor?
Wow, thank you.
4-0. Meeting adjourned.